We're about to get started. If anyone wants to do public comment, there's a sheet on the lectern up there with a pen. You guys know the routine. Are we ready? Good morning and welcome to the City of Chester City Council Meeting for today, Wednesday, August 27, 2025. Got that part right. We always start with an invocation and the pledge to the flag. Our invocation today will be brought to us by Chaplain John Johnson, soldier at the Salvation Army of Chester. Oh, there he is. All rise.
Let us pray. Lord God, we come for your presence humbly, that you might be able to instill guidance for us in this time. We thank you for one another, and we thank you for the stewardship that you have blessed us to be able to undertake. We ask, oh God, that you would supply the wisdom that we need in these times. Allow us, oh God, to be able to do that which is pleasing in your sight. Continue to use us, oh God, for your glory, and we ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a roll call.
Councilors Green.
President.
West.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Mayor Roots.
Present.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of August 13, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. We have two whole agenda items today. Who out there wants to give a public comment or comment on those agenda items? So let's get started. Madam Clerk. Oh, hold on. Old business, new business. Anything from council we want to share with the public while we're here? Anything old, anything new?
I just make a quick and, oh, I'm sorry, a quick announcement that this is the last week for vendor applications for the Peace, Love, and Unity Festival for September 13th. So you guys get a chance, any community members that would like to vent, please reach out to myself, Crystal Burrell, or any of the Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to give a shout out to this past weekend and our community and every organization that threw an event for our kids. We had a successful bookbag drive in partnership with the Kobe Dean and the Eagles. We had Carol Gazeem and her fishing with the Young Men and Women down 291, Cornerstone Baptist, and several other successful events that happened in Chester. So I just really want to applaud everyone for just coming together and really celebrating and having a good time.
And I'd like to compliment Crystal Burrell for all of her efforts with the block party this past weekend. It was a fun experience and everybody had a good time. So thank you, Crystal.
Okay, I'll chime in as well. Sun Village Park rededication was last week really successful. If you haven't seen it, just drive down 9th Street. When you get to Sun Village, take a look over and you'll see a lot of, a lot of exciting new things over there. A lot of color, a lot of flowers, a new trail around the playground. And I want to thank everybody involved. The, help me, Benita. Who was the, who was the organization who?
Clean Air Council.
Clean Air Council, that's it. I can never remember them. So I think it was up to $35,000 of improvements from them, and then a lot of the children from the area worked with Ms. Benita to add some added color and decorations. If you guys remember the, or know of the pavilion that's over there, just a couple of weeks ago, it had graffiti up and down the structures. Now it's wrapped in art, and it literally has a chandelier hanging from the top of the pavilion that lights up at night.
Yes.
That's pretty amazing. Thank you for that. Bookbag giveaways, can't say enough about those. There's a few more. No, I think we're all done for the year, right, with bookbag? Who knows? There's so many bookbag giveaways, we can't keep up.
Another one is Saturday.
Okay. There should be no kid left behind with a bookbag. And then, you know, to follow that up, school has started. So, you know, just, just be conscious of the fact that from, from K to PhD, we have students starting school, you know, the elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, charter schools, Catholic schools, home schools, and colleges. Safe Corridors are already out on the streets. Thank you for having a great group of trained individuals, and congratulations on the countywide training you guys did at Safe Corridors. It was well received, great newspaper article there. And that's all I have for community-related news. Let's then get into the no ordinances, but we have two really short resolutions. Madam Clerk.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Rodney D. Banks, 2107 Madison Street. Number two, Veronica Brown, 826 Hughes Street. Number three, Derek Flood, 911 McDowell Street. Beverly Howard, 411 Bickley Place. Pamela Hutnell, 1424 Nugent Place. Jeffrey Jackson, 2015 West Third Street. Percy Jackson, 219 Pusey Street. George Leverich, 1114 Remington Street. Michelle Robertson, 1427 Ridley Avenue. Crystal Ann Triplet, 803 Barclay Street. Donna Willis, 2428 West Fourth Street. And Juanita Willis at 2829 West 10th Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Vivian Hart and her husband, Samuel Hart, raised their children in Highland Gardens, and they understood the need to be directly involved with the safety and extracurricular support provided to children in the neighborhood where they lived. And whereas, in an effort to help construct an environment she and her family could be proud of, Mrs. Hart attended every planning meeting for two years regarding the creation of the Highland Gardens Playground. And whereas, Mrs. Hart was a key contributor to the establishment of Highland Gardens Playground, from the playground equipment chosen and installed, to the choice of the safest location to ensure children and families could have unfettered access to the playground free from traffic. And whereas, once the playground was established, she helped to keep the playground clean from debris through multiple volunteer efforts throughout her tenure as a resident. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby rename Highland Gardens Playground to the Vivian Hart Playground in honor of her contribution to the construction of the playground and her community organizing to effectively enact change despite personality differences, political positions, or socio-economic statuses. Further, that it does hereby approve the commissioning of a sign to reflect the renaming of the playground to Vivian Hart Playground.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'll just make a quick comment. I've known Ms. Vivian, I knew her for a very long time, her and her brother Jonathan, and the whole family, really. And I think it's important that we just continue to rename the streets and rename parks after people that we know that contribute so much to this city, and that is for the betterment of the City of Chester. So I'm honored to be a part of this and to make this change. And I look forward to doing other parks and other streets after great people that's trying to make the City of Chester better, because that's what it's about, all of us playing a part and a role in making the City of Chester better. So I look forward to supporting you guys.
Yeah, I, everything he said, except for the fact that I do not know Ms. Vivian Hart. But I will say, in all sincerity, the playground sounds a whole lot better as Vivian Hart Playground than Highland Gardens Playground. That's all I got to say to that. But, yeah, absolutely, that's, we can't change every playground name, and, you know, where we can, where it makes sense. We want to acknowledge, you know, people who contribute in our city, and if it's on street signs, playgrounds, wherever, if we can do it, we're certainly going to try. That's contemporary history. That's the kind of stuff that our young people need to know about, people that are still living or recently passed. If you ever come to the mayor's entryway, you'll see the portraits of all the mayors from number one up to more recent ones. And you'll, first thing you'll notice as you read their names is just that all of them are street names, almost all of them are street names in the city. But we don't know those people, but we know us. So we're looking for your contributions for people who have contributed greatly to the community so that we can continue this practice, just like he said. Madam Clerk.
Congratulations to the family, and thank you for all the hard work.
Oh, hold on. Where's the family? Who's, that's family? Oh, hi, family!
Thank you for all of the work that you continue to do. What a great legacy from Ms. Vivian Hart. So thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
I'm so glad you came. That's great.
Councilors Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
That is so exciting. Official business is over that fast. I should just hit the gavel when we all go home. But we're not going to do that. Yeah, right, right. So we got a couple of other things going on, some presentations. One that's not on the agenda, we apologize for missing it, but it's up on the screen now in the Chester City Police Department. And our Commissioner is on her way to the front. Every, well, now it's going to be the six-month report for the first half of 2025 compared to the first half of 2024. It's real important to have these updates for the community because oftentimes we lose track of, you know, what the statistics are. You know, something tragic happens in the street, and naturally, we just go, oh my God, things are out of control. But I think you'll see by the evidence presented by our Commissioner today that the crime situation here in Chester is not what our reputation reflects in and out of the town. So the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mayor Roots and City Council and community and everybody under the sound of my voice. As the mayor said, we're here to do the first half of the statistical comparison. Before I go into that, there's one thing that I'd like to, you know, touch on every now and again. And that's the mission statement of the Chester Police Department. The Chester Police Department, as an integral part of the community, is committed to protect the lives, property, and the rights of all people, to maintain order and to enforce the laws impartially. The department seeks to provide quality police service in partnership with other members of the community. To fulfill that mission, the department will strive to attain the highest degree of ethical behavior and professional conduct at all times. Before I move on to the report, this is just for understanding of everybody who's listening. In Pennsylvania, Part 1 and Part 2 crimes are classified and defined by the Uniform Crime Report System. Part 1 crimes include the most serious and commonly reported, such as criminal homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. Part 2 crimes are wider range of less severe offenses, including simple assault, drug-related offenses, fraud, vandalism, and disorderly conduct, and other non-violent or lower-level crimes.
Good morning. Touching on 2024 and comparing it to 2025 with respect to Part 1 crimes of arson.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Sergeant Kyle Vattonary. I'm attached to the Commissioner's office as a liaison.
Thank you.
Absolutely. With respect to 2024, there were zero cases of arson. To 2025, there was one offense with one clearance. Moving on to aggravated assault, there is 121 offenses with 69 clearances in 2024. Compared to 2025, there were 32 offenses with 12 clearances. With respect to burglary in 2024, there were 54 offenses, 10 clearances compared to 2025, 32 offenses and five clearances. Before I speak on homicide, I just want to say that this does not include attempted homicide, where there was no death of the victim. It will be included in the aggravated assault numbers. I'll be breaking them down in the next slide.
Before you speak on homicide, please define clearances for us.
Clearances would be, there was an arrest made, case is closed, went out to court. With respect to homicide in 2024, there were 15 offenses, 10 clearances. In 2025, seven offenses, two clearances. With robbery in 2024, 29 offenses, one clearance. Compared to 2025, 23 offenses, three clearances. Sexual assault in 2024, seven offenses, two clearances. To 2025, also seven offenses with two clearances. Theft, not related to motor vehicles, 120, I'm sorry, 195 offenses with 17 clearances. Compared to 2025, 185 offenses with five clearances. And with motor vehicle theft in 2024, there were 74 offenses with four clearances. And 2025, 53 offenses with seven clearances. Going over what I just read in a little more detail with respect to assault, assault by firearm. In 2024, there were 21 offenses. To 2025, there was 11 offenses, which is 63% favorable. Assault with a knife or other cutting instrument in 2024, there were 13 compared to 2025, where there were five offenses, 62% favorable. Any other dangerous weapon in 2024, there is 18 offenses compared to 2025, which was 10, 44% favorable. And strong-arm assault, there were 69 offenses in 2024 compared to six in 2025, which is 91% favorable. Moving on to burglary with forcible entry in 2024, there were 29 offenses compared to 2025, where there was 31, which is 6% unfavorable. Burglary where there is no force, 2024, there was 17 offenses with one in 2025, which is 94% favorable. And attempted burglary in 2024, eight cases with none in 2025, which is obviously 100% favorable. Moving on next to robbery involving a firearm, there was 11 offenses in 2024 compared to 15 in 2025, which is 36% unfavorable. Involving a knife or other cutting instrument being displayed or used, there was two offenses in 2024 compared to one in 2025, which is 50% favorable. Any other dangerous weapon involved, two in 2024 compared to three in 2025, which is 50% unfavorable. And strong-arm robbery in 2024, 14 cases compared to four in 2025, 71% favorable. Motor vehicle theft, just involving a car, not a truck or anything like that, in 2024, there were 52 reported incidents compared to 2025, which there was 53, 2% unfavorable. Motor vehicle theft of trucks and/or buses, seven in 2024 compared to zero in 2025, 100% favorable. And other vehicles in 2024, there was 15 compared to zero in 2025, 100% favorable. Speaking on homicide involving a firearm in 2024, there was 12 reported incidents would compare to seven in 2025, which is 41% favorable. Involving blunt force trauma, there was two in 2024 compared to 2025, which is 100% favorable. And zero accident-related for 2024 and 2025. And speaking on the Part 2 crimes and drug-related offenses from January to June 2024 and 2025, simple assault is showing zero in 2024 with zero clearances. That is a UCR-related error. And in 2025, there was one and one. Going to stolen property crimes, there was 121 offenses compared to 69 clearances. And in 2025, there was 32 offenses with 12 clearances. Vandalism, which is commonly called criminal mischief in UCR, there were 54 offenses and 10 clearances in 2024. And in 2025, there were 32 offenses with five clearances. Drug sale and manufacturing, there was five offenses in 20, I'm sorry, 15 offenses in 2024 compared to 10 clearances. And in 2025, there was seven offenses with two clearances. Drug possession, there were 29 offenses in 2024 with one clearance. And in 2025, there were 23 offenses with three clearances. Driving under the influence or DUI in 2024, there were seven offenses. And in 2025, there was also seven. Drunkenness, there was 195 reported cases compared to 2025, there was 185. And relating to disorderly conduct, there was 74 related offenses, four clearances. Compared to 2025, there was 53 offenses and seven clearances.
As of July 23, 2025, there had been a total of 15 non-fatal shootings classified as assault within the Part 1 slide, and where offenders are criminally charged for attempted homicide. As of this date, we are on par with 2023, which was the lowest reported total for these incidents. This is currently a 16% decrease from overall incident from last year. Firearms-related homicides are down 40% compared to 2024, and 53% from 2024 overall. In the first half of 2024, there were a total of 160 firearms submitted as found, recovered, or submitted as evidence. With this 50, with this 50 individuals were arrested for persons not to possess a firearm due to lack of a license or felony conviction. In the first half of 2025, there have been 132 firearms recovered with 64 individuals arrested. Chester Safe Summer Initiative, an intensive community policing initiative to help reduce violent crime in the City of Chester this summer. Beginning June 13, 2025, in collaboration with the Delaware County District Attorney's Office, the City of Chester Police Department launched the Chester Safe Summer Initiative. The effort consists of police personnel on foot patrol duties throughout various neighborhoods with a focus on establishing and strengthening relationships with community members versus prioritizing arrests. The overall goal of the Chester Safe Summer Initiative is to provide visibility of police personnel to deter crime and allow community feel safe while enjoying the warm weather.
Justin.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Mayor, Council, and members of the public of Chester. The Commissioner was just mentioning the Safe Summer Initiative that we had this summer. And before she gets into some of the statistics from the summer, I just wanted to provide a little bit more context and a little bit more broader explanation of the efforts that we had this summer. So just to highlight a couple of things that we did, not just with the police department, but more broadly through the Office of the Mayor, City Hall here, and other organizations throughout the city. We kicked off the summer with a very successful Safe Summer Fair, where we invited dozens of organizations into City Hall right here in the community room to try to connect parents and guardians and their kids to various programs and activities happening over the course of the summer. And that was to launch it. From there, we maintained a Safe Summer webpage on our website, where we updated it regularly with various camps, programs, events, resources, food programs, and things happening in our parks and public spaces as well. That was accessible on our webpage. It was accessible through our new mobile app, Chester City Connect, that's free. You can download it in your app store on your phone. We sent out regular notifications on social media and through the app. All told, we actually had more than, over the less than 90 days of the summer, we actually had more than 50 one-off events over the course of the summer between the city and, again, partner organizations in the city. So 50 out of 90 days, you know, is very successful. This year, we were able to get Memorial Park Pool opened relatively on time and ran that through the summer this weekend. It's still open through this weekend, so Labor Day is the final day for the Memorial Park Pool. We launched our summer food program. The school district also had a summer food program to try to make sure that kids had access to food over the summer when they're not in school. We were able to secure a deal again this summer, as we did last summer, with the Philadelphia Union to get free tickets for Chester residents and their families and their kids to go to Union 2 games at Subaru Park, right here on our waterfront. And we had over 1,200 people redeem tickets for the games that we had access to. So thank you to the Philadelphia Union for that partnership. The Chester Partnership for Safe Neighborhoods, in partnership with the Commissioner and with the DA's office, ran a series of targeted neighborhood block parties, where we went actually specifically into neighborhoods that tend to be hotspot zones and through block parties to give people in that neighborhood alternative, positive things to engage with over the summer. Overall, we had increased programming and communication, key hires that we've made over the past year. We hired a new communication specialist who was helping to get the word out about some of these events and help connect residents to what's happening in the city. And we also hired a Parks and Rec Coordinator, Crystal Burrell, who we already mentioned earlier tonight, who was able to dive in, pull off, you know, the Memorial Park Pool, the summer food program, and increase some of the programming that we had available this summer. So shout out again to Crystal. And finally, a couple other items through the Chester Police Department. We again had a summer curfew, where the intention of that was not to be arresting youth, but to just, when it's starting to get dark, to make sure that we're helping juveniles get safely home and not be out on the street unattended. And finally, over the summer, the mayor initiated a bi-weekly Violence Prevention Task Force call, where between the Commissioner's Office, the DA's Office, and various people from the community who are kind of in the know of what's happening, we had these regular calls so that, one, we could get ahead of anything if there was, seemed to be something brewing on the streets and be able to respond to that quickly. Or if something did happen over the summer, that we would have a rapid response and make sure that there weren't sort of repeated, you know, retaliatories type of violence over the summer. That's a call that we are going to continue to hold, not just for the summer, but in an ongoing fashion. So just wanted to give a little bit broader context of some of the initiatives that we took as the City of Chester for a safe summer. I'll now turn it back to the Commissioner to go over some of the stats.
Before I get to the stats, I'd like to piggyback off of what Justin said. Those task force conversations played a pivotal role in the Safe Summer Initiative. During those conversations, we were able to get in front of maybe things that were brewing in the neighborhoods, stuff that was brewing at Memorial Park and different things. So it was imperative that we had those meetings, because Chester Safe Summer was not only a success because of the patrol and police officers in the detail, it was because the community got involved. We were made aware of everything. We had people calling us. We had people sending their Ring cameras, information, everything that we needed to ensure that everybody could continue to sit on their porches, continue to just enjoy Chester as they should have. The detail itself consisted of two sets of officers, well, two groups of officers. One supervisor and three officers to each group. They were designated to go into these hotspots. Again, not for arrests. This detail was more or less about community policing, getting to know our neighborhoods, getting to know the owners of businesses, and people being comfortable with seeing the police just as a presence. Not that we were coming to arrest anybody or, you know, to bring any discomfort. The whole idea with Chester Safe Summer was to be just that, Chester Safe Summer. And I think we did a great job with that. For the statistics for Chester Safe Summer, and this is also in comparison from 2024, June through August this time though. For arsons, in 2024, there were two. twenty-four, there were two. This year, there were one. There was one. For assaults, we had thirty-six in two thousand and twenty-four. This year, we had ten. Burglaries, twenty-five. This year, we had nine. For homicides, we had seven. This year, we had one. Robberies, eighteen. This year, nine. Sex, sexual assaults, five. This year, we had one. Thefts, non-MV, a hundred and eleven. This year, we had sixty-nine. And thefts of motor vehicles, last year, we had thirty-nine. This year, we had eighteen. This was all due to the partnership, um, with the District Attorney and the community. The District Attorney, um, basically gave us an offer we couldn't refuse. They offered to fund it. So it was an overtime detail. And with that, and just saying that, if we always had that type of manpower, just imagine where we would be. Do I have any questions?
Yes. First and foremost, thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
For this presentation. I want to thank you for your time and all the dedication that you and the officers put in to make sure that our community is safe. With some of the statistics that you mentioned, what is something that you see the community can do to help keep these numbers the way they are right now? As you communicated, this is only a six-month report.
Mm-hmm.
We still have the rest of the year to go. You communicated, you read off the, uh, City of Chester, um, police, um, I'm sorry, what's it called? When you, the first thing you read?
Mission statement.
Mission statement, I'm sorry. Missed my mind. Uh, you read the mission statement, you hinted on the community involvement.
Mm-hmm.
As you're speaking to the community and as we are live, what is something that a community can do to help, um, help keep these numbers down as well as the elected officials and everyone that's involved so that we can, you know, keep the trends and positivity that you mentioned today, keep, keep them going?
Continue to be involved. Encourage people, encourage the community to call. Police officers on duty, twenty-four, seven. Make the call. I don't care what it is. You would be surprised what a parking ticket can turn into. You would be surprised what loud music can turn into. It starts with the quality of life issues. I don't want anybody to get used to just dealing with stuff because people are doing it. Loud music, groups, double parking, all that type of stuff, that leads right into the big stuff. So if I had one thing to say, would be, continue to be involved and continue to support Chester Police Department.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I mean, th- these are great numbers. It just shows that crime is down and Chester is on the move. And these are the numbers, and this is what we need in order to move the city forward and bring people back to the city. And, you know, some of the numbers, the main number, which was the highest number that stood out, was the drunkenness.
Mm-hmm.
So crime is down and drinking is up.
That means we like a good time.
And so, uh, you know, I just want to commend you for all the hard work that you and your team is doing and the partnerships with the District Attorney, State Police, and all of the different, um, partnerships that come into the city and help the police department. Uh, this is what we need to continue moving the city forward. So, uh, kudos and, uh, continue the great work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
And to the Police Department for all of your hard work. I see you out there and, you know, you and I, we have a direct line between each other.
Yes, ma'am.
And I thank you for your support from all of you and, uh, keep up the good work.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Yeah, just glad, that's great. I will say that we love data up here as mayor and particularly our, our Chief Financial Officer, our Chief of Staff, our Receiver, our Controller. You know, numbers and data mean everything. Analytics, it, it shapes our decision-making. I've always lived by the, the premise of you can't manage what you can't measure. So that's very important that we, we have these numbers, we have these reports, we keep stats, we, we can't be sloppy about that at all. I was just reminded by Council Lady, I want to do this now before I forget, we did have a executive session on August twenty-fifth, a couple of days ago, it was on a legal matter. And before I bring up the Salvation Army who is going to give a presentation, I want to just rave, I guess, about an MFRA meeting that was held yesterday, Municipal Financial Recovery Advisory Committee. It meets every couple of weeks. It's where the city and the Receiver, along with the county and, uh, representative from the state, just give the community an update of what's going on. Many times, it involves a special presentation by the Receiver. This week's covered the rental registration program and an update on what's going on at the Benjamin Banneker Apartments. I will encourage all of you to watch that one. It's, it's, it's online. But I think it might be a good time to also reintroduce you to what that meeting is, why it's important. And now that we have a new Receiver, I'm going to ask him to come up and, and do that task for us. So be short, now you have to come to the mic, you know that. So this is our Receiver, Vijay Kapoor. Give us just, you know, thirty seconds, sixty seconds on MFRA and what it means.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be very short. Uh, good, uh, good morning to the Mayor and members of Council. What the MFRA is, it's actually a, it's actually mandated by Act Forty-Seven. So this is a, this is a committee that has a member that is appointed by the Chief Executive, uh, by the head, the Chief Executive of the municipality, uh, by the head of the governing body of the, of the municipality, uh, one member from the county and one member from the state. And it meets, uh, every two weeks. Uh, we are online. It is the second and fourth Tuesday, uh, and it is a, it's an opportunity for us to give updates to the community, uh, to members of, of, of the MFRA. Mayor is on it, as is Councilman Davis, uh, and those are all recorded, and they're online. We give updates on the bankruptcy, we also talk about operations. So, uh, in some cases, I, as the Receiver, need to consult with the MFRA before I take action, uh, and it is an advisory board. So there's a lot of good information over there, that, you know, we do a fair amount of PowerPoints, uh, they're out there as well. Uh, and, um, like I said, and like the Mayor said, this is a good opportunity for folks to, to, to keep in touch. Sometimes they're a little bit long, uh, but you can, you can fast-forward it and you can find the presentations, uh, also on the Receiver's, uh, website. And they are, they are livestreamed on the Receiver's Facebook page, which is facebook.com/chesterreceivership.
One more time, where, where's the where?
It is, uh, online, uh, on the Receiver's Facebook page, which is facebook.com/chesterreceivership.
YouTube as well, right?
Yes, it is. Yes, it's also posted on the Receiver's, uh, YouTube page.
Okay.
Thank you. Let them know what time?
One o'clock, one o'clock, the second and fourth Tuesday of each month.
And while you're here, Mr. Receiver, I would like to piggyback off of what the Mayor said, it was a wonderful meeting yesterday. And I would, I would like to appreciate what you did with incorporating the LNI Department and actually asking boots-on-the-ground questions of what's happening, um, with the dental, with the different rental registration programs and how the LNI Department is working and what resources they need to, you know, best improve the city's services. Uh, that was really helpful to the community. And we got a lot of comments on the live, and I know you've seen that, and I have a lot of comments from DMs and different residents calling me yesterday and saying that information was really helpful. So I just want to thank you for adding that part, portion to the meeting because it did our residents some good.
Yeah, absolutely, Councilman. And, and again, the, the meeting was about an hour long yesterday. Um, you know, there's, there was a presentation for folks who were interested in the Banneker, Benjamin Banneker situation, it's about, we started that about halfway through the presentation. Uh, the first part of that talked about the rental registry program. And to your point, Councilman, the folks who stole the show were Nona Watson and Frankie Lynn. Uh, Nona Watson is the city's, um, Community Economic Development Director, who is in the audience here. Uh, Frankie Lynn is the Interim Assistant Building Code Official. Uh, and, and, um, you know, to hear those folks talk about like what they actually do, I learned quite a bit about them personally. Uh, I know all of us did as well. Uh, and, and again, folks, I hope get a better sense of the, the desire that the Council, the Receiver, the city staff, uh, is trying to do with the city's quality of life. You saw it today with the Commissioner, with Commissioner Blackwell. Uh, this is a huge push across the city, um, and, uh, you know, we, it can't be done without the people who are actually doing the job. I can talk about it, uh, we can help try and fund it and find ways of doing it, but the folks who are actually doing the job are, are Nona Watson and, uh, and her staff. And we see it, again, kind of across the board. So, um, thank you, uh, Councilmember, for your question.
And thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that Frankie Lynn started out in the Public Works Department. And, uh, I just want to, want you to know that we do have here an upward mobility program where those persons who have shown talent in certain areas, we do honor that and promote that. He went for training, you know, classes, and he worked really hard to get to this position. So kudos to Frankie Lynn, who came from Public Works.
Now, this time, we're going to have a presentation by the Salvation Army. Um, I sit on the Salvation Army Advisory Board, and I am, uh, they've done a lot of great work in the city, and they want to continue that work. And so they're just going to do a quick presentation and just tell you about the mission and what they're doing in the city and how the city may can play a role in the, the community, uh, the residents and, um, what they're doing. So Salvation Army.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Mayor Roots, and Councilmembers for allowing me the opportunity to be here and speak.
Introduce yourself. He just moved to the city.
I was going to.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to say my thank you first. My name is, I am Major James Stevenson, and I, along with my wife, Major Maria, are the core officers and, and administrators of the Salvation Army here in Chester. We replaced the cowboys, if you knew who they were. Uh, we took over for them last July. So we've been here about a year, we've had an opportunity to kind of see some things happen. And I just wanted to take a few moments just to speak about who we are and what we do here in the city of Chester. Now, Councilman Green did emphasize my time is short, and as a preacher, well, we'll see. Chaplain John can, uh, speak to that part himself, uh, but I do have my stuff in writing, so hopefully I'll just get through this and, and we'll be good. So again, thank you for allowing me to be here. The Salvation Army is, uh, a cornerstone of community support here in Chester. Last year alone, we serve the community by providing over eighteen thousand meals and grocery orders through our food programs and offering over fourteen thousand nights of care through sheltering initiatives and continuing to increase, uh, our social services and holiday assistance, um, support. This spring, we also did a, sort of like a summer kickoff-type thing where we opened ourselves up to the community. We had bounce houses and food and prizes and everything else. We had over two hundred individuals just come and hang out with us on that one Saturday. It was awesome. It was great. Uh, but I do want to point out that the demand for our services is greater than ever, especially in the areas of housing stability and, and food insecurity. We're seeing more individuals needing help, uh, than, than ever before, and more individuals just to stay afloat, like more people are coming by just to stay afloat. So what I wanted to, to, what I want to ensure is that the Salvation Army is prepared to support our neighbors, um, as they address today's needs and tomorrow's challenges. And to that end, we have some, some things that we, we would like to see happen in our self, in, in our program. So we have the shelter, as you may know, uh, with providing those nights of care. We are trying to address one of the major hurdles in finding permanent housing by addressing mental health issues. We would like to bring somebody in-house. I'm finding that it's difficult to do it otherwise, but we would like to bring somebody in-house to help us with that mental care, mental health care component, and by that, remove or deal with one of the obstacles people have in finding permanent housing. We do have an excellent rate of placement from our program, somewhere about ninety-two percent, where they move on from the program into permanent housing, and we just want to see that number grow. You can, uh, this can include strengthening and expanding our programs, upgrading our kitchen and pantry, and increasing our ability to help individuals and families avoid the instability caused by housing insecurity. So in the future, in the coming weeks, I should say, I would like to reach out to people individually, or if you would like to reach out to me, to hear your perspective on what the community needs most and, and what we can do as the Salvation Army to help meet that need. So again, thank you for your time. I did want to keep it short. I want to leave a couple of moments if anybody has any questions for me. All right then.
No, wait a minute now. We got to warm up to the questions. Nothing, so a couple of stats that you did present, though, eighteen thousand meals.
Yes.
That's amazing. Fourteen thousand nights of shelter is amazing. And then you just touched on the fact that it's not enough.
Right.
Like housing and food is a huge issue. I'm hearing it all over town, particularly the food.
Yes.
Particularly the food. Uh, for those of you who don't know, organizations like Phil Abundance and Share Food Network, they're not getting the food because there's been some changes in, in federal funding and, and issues like that. So, uh, Chester is also experiencing a rise of new individuals coming to town. And they seek out resources like yours. I'm sure you see them.
Yes.
I'm sure they're joining the lines that, uh, are, are making them longer and making it more difficult for you to, to serve them. And, you know, for some of these organizations, it's just as simple as, we used to be open from, let's say, eleven to two, and now we're out of food by twelve or eleven-thirty. And those individuals, when I talk about stats and, and, you know, measuring to manage, those are the stats that really give us an indication of what we're looking for. The, the, the term that you said, like, there's today's needs, but tomorrow's challenges.
Yes.
You know, we do have to have some foresight. And really, really thrilled that you're here today. We don't hear enough directly from the Salvation Army. We know you're there, you've been there seemingly forever in the city of Chester, serving.
Yes.
Uh, and, and existing, and that's tough in a city like Chester, just to have an organization to be there year after year after year, uh, serving in a top-notch fashion that you guys do. Every time the leadership changes, it just seems to just be a pass of the baton, and you guys just keep going. So I congratulate you for that.
Thank you.
We, we promise to have you here on a regular basis to, you know, update us on how you help the community and, and how we can be a vehicle to spread the word of the Salvation Army, you know, for all the help and assistance that, that can be had from you guys. Uh, thank you for coming out today. Thank you for, uh, inviting him. That was.
Appreciate that.
A real surprise, a real pleasure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
It is that time, the time that some people only come for.
We got one person.
It's public comment. All right, so we had two resolutions to approve, and we have two public comments. We had two presentations, although we'll, we'll add you as a presentation, uh, Mr. Receiver. Harry Crawford, come on down.
Two, 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 trip two is coming up.
Yeah, yeah. Now he's out here playing numbers.
Uh, good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning, Mayor.
My first question is, why do we pass ordinance? And the, as the, as the reason why I ask, uh, that question is, one, one of the problems that the city of Chester has is high grass. Back when, back when, uh, twenty sixteen, you passed an ordinance, which basically said six, a six-inch height. But, um, that's, that seems to go, uh, un, um, uh, unmandated. Not too long ago, also, that, um, they, uh, you also passed the, uh, the, as the ordinance is about tracking trailers that come in the city. As again, that has become unmandated, uh, being taken care of. What does it take to actually go past it just being an ordinance and in turn put, uh, into effect? The other, as, as the other question which I have is that I have asked over many years of, of actually coming here, have the police ride through our neighborhood on a consistent basis to, to keep from, from having people who choose to do bad by, by different means of coming into our neighborhood as because there is not on a consistent basis, police officers riding through, talking to the neighbors, or even actually walking through to, to actually know the neighbors? What does it take? I mean, we have hired several different police officers, but they don't come to our part of town that often. Yesterday was the first police car that I actually saw come through our neighborhood. And as, I'm, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say a month, but it's been equal or in turn more than. All we ask is to keep from, in turn, having what's happening and... or in turn, more than. All we ask is to keep from having what's happening in, into other parts of the city gravitate our way. As, even according to the ordinance, it says, anyone who is in the street department, they can actually issue a citation to any household that they see that has high grass. But the only answer that I always seem to get is, we don't have the actual manpower to actually make that happen. It's called "make it happen" because you've already written the ordinance saying, "Make it happen." And that's all that happened.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Let's talk about that a little bit. We got some time. He came up and asked a question, why do we pass ordinances? Well, first of all, ordinances are created for a reason, something that we want to address, that needs to be addressed in the city. Then it comes before us for a vote. Not all ordinances pass, but most of them do. Ordinances become laws of the city. He spoke of two ordinances that have been on the books for a very long time. High grass, I'm sure, has been on the books for a very long time. And that's something that is addressed by primarily our License and Inspection Department with enforcement and just the whole line of, of policies and procedures that they follow. And then tractor-trailers, which we all know, people who more than likely work for trucking companies, they come home at night, they park somewhere on the city street, they go home. What we've found, now that we're checking into a lot of them, they're not even from Chester. We see people from out of town, park their cars in Chester, and then get a ride to neighboring communities. So, his question is, why, why aren't these addressed? If they're on the book, why, why isn't it being enforced? I will say that there's not a day that goes by, especially in the summer, where there are not violations written by the LNI Department and by the Police Department. They do recognize the tractor-trailers that are out there. If we see them, we bring it to their attention. But that doesn't resolve the issue that you're seeing. You're like, why isn't it totally under control right now? Well, just think about, now, I'd have to look at the date. Let's just talk about the high grass ordinances or things related to that. I'm sure they were put in at a time when, you know, Chester had more homeowners who took care of their front yards, and it wasn't as big as an issue as it is now. When you consider that 70% of the population in Chester are renters, and many of the landlords are not local, we have a lot of empty and abandoned buildings that have grass in the front and the back and the side of those that go unaddressed by people who have just abandoned their properties. The incidents, the incidences of high grass and weeds is far greater than when the ordinance was written. More importantly, and the truth that you did receive, is that we just don't have enough people who, who are dealing with those issues. We, our departments that do enforcement in those areas haven't grown at the pace that the incidence of high grass and weeds and trailers are out there. Let me tell you, there are some places in town where you don't see trailers anymore. Anybody know where Flower Street is? I mean, that's been a thorn in our side for years. We've addressed that. Truckers don't like being towed and going to pick up their, their trailers or their tractors and trailers, paying $5,000, $10,000. You know, that stops that quick, quickly. But to your point, I got a couple photos this week from people who see trailers, you know, on streets that they've never been on before. In some cases, it's like a game of whack-a-mole. You know, you get them over here, and they pop up over there. It's not to say that we're not doing it, but we do not have the resources right now to address it and eliminate it. That's the case on many issues around the city. So, there's your answer there. As far as officers are concerned, in a perfect world, officers would drive the 97 miles of streets that we have in the city each and every day, each and every shift. But, you know, they're only going to hit you when they pass through. To your point, and I, and I love your point, like, are they getting out the cars? Are they spending time getting to know the people in the communities, the businesses, the, maybe not as much as we want them to. Maybe not. Maybe there needs to be a little more effort on, on just that. And that is something the Commissioner and I talk about. But let's go back a couple decades, when the police force were very much populated by people who grew up in the city, who knew the city. They didn't have to be introduced, you know, to their neighbors or in the neighborhoods. Now, we're to a point where we can't get many locals to sign up to be police officers. That's the huge difference. And somehow, we have to address, you know, getting to the young people early and making police work attractive so they can apply and serve their city in that capacity. I'll walk out on this street right now, and more times than not, people run up on me, "Yo, can I get a job in this city?" You know, I say, "Can you give me a resume?" And then they run away. You know, many of these people, you know, may only qualify to be a Public Works person. Not that that's an unfavorable job, but I'm not getting people running up to me and saying, "I want to be the next CFO. I want to be the next Director of Community and Economic Development. I want to be your next accountant." But no one's walked up to me and says, "I want to be your next police officer." So, somehow, we have to change the attitude in this town that, and let them know that it's a desirable job. And we need locals. Not that the police that come in don't do a good job at policing, but when your community is full of people that are from the community that's policing, that issue that you just spoke of, of doing the extra effort of getting out of the car and knowing them, could be totally eliminated because you grew up with them. When I was a kid, my, my, my friends' dads and uncles were police officers. When I got out of high school, my classmates were police officers. They've all retired now. And the degree in which they've been replaced with locals has diminished to almost zero. So, your point's well taken. And, you know, how it gets addressed, when it gets addressed, is an ongoing effort. But everybody knows if they need anything specifically. I had asked Justin to put up a phone number. We just got a new phone system installed in the city. I'm going to encourage everybody that there's only one number that you need to call to get to anything City of Chester. It is 610-447-7700. Why that number? I, I will ask you to test me on that, challenge me on that. Call that number. There's a whole new menu system that will get you directly to the departments, which never happened before, to resolve your issues. There's the menu there. We're actually going to add to the menu, if it hasn't been added already, Police and Fire. So, you don't have to know a police number. You don't have to know the fire department's number. Now, of course, in a case of emergency, 911 is where you want to call. 911, every time. I witnessed an auto accident on Seventh Street. I didn't call the Police Commissioner. I called 911. And I'd say, in less than a minute, a cruiser was coming by. So, in emergencies, call 911. But if you want to reach people in the city, forget any number you ever had, any extension you ever had in the past. You'll be able to call. There's a menu of, of options to all the departments. And then if, you know, you do want to have an individual and you have their extension, you have that option, too. Don't forget the Chester City Connect app. I think we have well over 500 people who have downloaded it. It is absolutely free. It doesn't track you. It's not a, it's not going to get any privacy. It's for us to notify you of what's going on. Don't be scared of the Free Chester app. It's our way of trying to communicate, not trying, of communicating to the community. So, that's my spiel on that. Mr. Saleem, Mr. Number Two, you're Number Two. You're Number One in my book, but you're Number Two today.
I'm Number One.
You don't have to run.
Yes, sir. Shukran. Thank you, brother. Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The good people come. Yeah, so, my name is Amin Abdul-Saleem. I live 240 Patterson Street. I, I'm going to lessen my time here. The sister, the lady, Councilwoman West, she mentioned, "Oh, he comes every time." Well, I wanted to correct that because I don't want the people to feel pressured. She might have said it in good way, I'm sure. But to, for me, to come every, you know, every time and share every time, I think that would be a little bit too much. Yes. So, I was coming here a long time. I don't, I'd like to say for 50 years. And I had a reason to come, you know, and to keep it moving straight. You know, we musta came the straight way. You're born on, you come out of your mother on, if you will, and you got intent for you to come back straight way. Then musta came straight way. I, I name my master in musta came, so, Inshallah, God's willing. So, I was coming, and for that reason. Let me say to you that God said this, if you will, sir. He said, "When come to help of your Lord, when come to help of God, you will see the people coming into God's religion in crowds." So, this day here, I've come up to this day, it wasn't God's help before. It was the enemy's help, Inshallah, but the good people who made good comment, certainly. But when come to help of God, you will see the people coming into God's religion in crowds. This is the day that this is happening. I don't need to come as that much. We are on, God is, is, is entering into our soul, our hearts, and He's directing us, if we, if our soul, heart is opening up, accepting Him. But we are people of faith, and we do accept our Lord, expressly now, expressly now. So, but let me say also that Mr. Trump, Trump, he has a different plan than what God is doing, what God is doing. But God said, let me say this. He said, "When they kindle a fire against you, I will extinguish it, extinguish it." So, we want to stay with our Lord. We want to go straight, stay with our Lord, knowing that this, that Trump is doing, that President and his staff is, is going to be extinguished, extinguished. That's one thing.
Nope, wait a minute. You're out of time. So, just give us one more thing in like 20 seconds.
Okay. The Police Commissioner, she made a powerful statement. She said, "If we, imagine if we had all of this that we have before, that we have today, if we had it before." So, this, again, this is in line with when God said, "When come to help of your Lord, you will see the people coming to God's religion in crowds." So, this is the day, sir. I will be coming back to, because someone is needed here to keep us straight, because you were not in this order before. We coming into this order. So, certainly, I would lack for it to keep it going. And we do what our loyal want us to do. Inshallah. I thank you, sir, for allowing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's close out. Any final comments from Solicitor? You haven't said anything all day.
I think everything we said yesterday in the MFRAC meeting that I would say
All right, very good. How about Council? Any final comments?
Have a great day, everybody.
Well, yeah, we're not closing out yet. We got to hit the gavel. No, I just want to mention, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Saleem, Mr. Saleem, when I mentioned the fact that you are here at just about every meeting, it was indeed in a positive way. I'm so happy and proud of you. You're my classmate, and I've known you through the years. You've always been a gentle giant and a very kind person. And it's nice to see you here, supporting your community. So, it was very much in a kind and positive way. And I welcome, I, I enjoy seeing you and hearing from you every council meeting.
Excellent. I'm going to just, lights are important around this town, right? Couple years ago, we upgraded all the streetlights to the LED lights. They are brighter, and they do work. If you do have any lighting problems, if you see any of those lights out, please call, what number? 610-447-78700. Get to the Public Works Department, and they'll send out the people to fix them. I'm that guy who says the city just should be bright. If we want to, people to be attracted to the city or parts of the city that are important to us, we have to brighten them up. Because Times Square wouldn't be Times Square without lights. The Vegas Strip wouldn't be the Vegas Strip without lights, as two examples. My chief of staff reminded me that the lobby area downstairs is so bright now. This room has gotten brighter. I've, I've had an emphasis on just brightening up this place. But what I'm really excited about is, if you're coming down Avenue of the States in the nighttime, the lobby is bright, the City Hall looks bright. You know, we don't want this to be a dark place, right? We want this to look like a welcoming place for the community, because this is your house, and you're going to see some lights outside as well. Don't forget to pick up one of these. Not a lot on it. We oftentimes are double-sided, but the Peace, Love, Unity Festival coming up. Download the city app. There's a First Annual Citywide Chester Pride Community Cleanup, where everybody can get involved with our block captains, and find out where the address is. There's a Black, Black to School, Back to School Revival going on. If you've been going past 95 or Concord Road at Central, no, at Tillman, you'll see this beautiful sunflower mural going up on a building that really looks great up there. Go check that out. There's going to be a, I'll call it a ribbon-cutting tomorrow, and a bookbag giveaway down on Third Street. So, make sure you get that. And finally, all I have to say is, happy holiday. We got Monday off. I don't know about you guys, but we're excited. Monday is a holiday, so services will be somewhat curtailed here in the city. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Second.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Councilman, go see Karen. She has your chat.
Sure.
Amanda.
Amanda.
Of the time for her.
Amanda.